Is 7:02 is my best guess, and I'm calling the meeting to order. So, tonight we have at the table, my name is Katie Silberger, I am the Chair of the ZBA. This is Ellen Rocco, member Victoria Danskin. We have new member Tony Saracino at the end of the table, and we would like to welcome Tony. Hope you know what you're getting yourself into. Rogan O'Donnell is our Secretary. And in the audience is sitting Sally Rhodes, who for the past, hasn't been four years that you have been our liaison. So, tonight is Sally's last meeting with us, and I would like to just give you a heartfelt thanks because you cannot imagine how hard Sally has worked for us. I never ever called Sally up and was told, "I don't have time for this." She, you know, whatever we needed in terms of support Sally was great. So, I would like to thank you for your wonderful service. Thank you. I would also like to mention that the former Chair of the ZBA Carl Budman passed away recently, and if we could just have a moment of silence in remembrance of Carl. Okay, thank you. A few other little housekeeping issues. We need to get our workshop time in, and so, Tony, I think you're, you're safe for this year. But, some of us need to either get on the computer, or there will be a workshop held on June 23rd, 2015, and can you tell us more about that?
Sure, well, that was the date that the ZBA decided that they wanted to have a little workshop with the building inspector, to basically go over the ZBA procedures, maybe have public hearings held, building department processes, and how, how that flows in with ZBA procedures. So, just kind of getting everybody on the same page, and probably a four-hour workshop. It wouldn't count towards this year's training credit, it would count towards next year's. And the requirement actually doesn't count towards, Tony, he gets, it starts for you in June.
Oh, okay.
And what time does it begin?
What time is it going to begin?
Probably during...
Oh, that's the fifth meeting?
Right.
That's the fifth meeting?
Yeah, yeah, it's gonna go from seven, it's gonna be two hours long. Yeah, we'll do seven to nine. So, and then Rogan has been very dizzy today. We are starting to take advantage of the fact that the Village now has sort of a new website structure. And we are putting up some things about what the ZBA does, what you can expect from the ZBA, and it outlines basic procedures and zoning enforcement actions, and I think we put copies of things that the, a few things that the Department of State of New York State has published about what an ideal ZBA does. Of course, we are the ideal. So, on tonight's agenda, we have one public hearing for 71 Main Street, one continued application discussion of the code determination for commercial use, and a discussion regarding a rehearing request for ZBA 14. So, the first item on the agenda is ZBA 1501, commercial lot coverage area variance request for 71 Main Street. Mr. Goldman, would you like to join us at the table?
Yes, thank you. Hi.
Okay. Oh, yes.
This is a public hearing?
Yes, this is a public hearing.
I'd like to move we open the public hearing.
And could I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? Okay, so the motion passes. So, the application is currently before the Planning Board for site review, and is seeking area variances simultaneously. The Planning Board recommended that the applicant go to the ZBA during their March 17th, 2015 meeting. The Planning Board made the following recommendation during their May 5th, 2015 meeting. Mr. Zeiler motioned to recommend to the ZBA to consider granting this area variance for ZBA 1501 at 71 Main Street. Mr. Stefan seconded. Four ayes, one nay, Ms. Harshaw, motion carries. The Ulster County Planning Board reviewed this application during their May 6th, 2015 meeting, and determined that there would be no county impact. The building inspector Mark Chaffey provided a letter of determination regarding this application, which reads, "Your application for dividing an existing building into two retail uses has been reviewed by this department with the following determination. The proposed uses, retail, are allowed uses in the B2 zone. The minimum lot size for each use is 2,500 square feet. The lot size is 2,178 square feet. You will require a 2,822 square foot variance to have two retail uses. Since the structure is pre-existing and still in use, you would not require any lot coverage or setback variances unless you plan to alter the footprint of the structure. A site plan review will also be required due to the change in use from one retail use to two retail uses. I understand that you have already presented your proposal to the Planning Board for a conceptual review, and were directed from them to seek a variance before proceeding with a site plan." So, do you have any, well, first of all, we want to ask for public input.
Yes.
So, before we get there, is there any public input on this request to have 71 Main Street divided into two retail uses from one retail use? Okay, so, do you have any comments?
I'm just hoping that you can, you know, grant the variance, that I can go ahead. The tenant earth goods is moving in about a little over a month, and I'd like to get to work to beautify the Village of Newport.
Okay. Was there any discussion here?
Yeah, I'd like to know a few things. First of all, do you plan on changing the facade of the building at all?
Repeat that, excuse me?
Do you plan on changing the facade of the building?
Oh, the facade, yes, I can hear that word, yes. We're gonna, hopefully, we're gonna put in glass, all glass, with two entrance doors on the side, with a wall down the middle.
But the outside's not changed?
Right, the brick and everything else above it stays the same, it's just, where the, there's glass now, it's single pane glass that probably needs to be replaced, there's sort of, you know, double pane insulated type glass with two doors.
So, where would you be putting the doors?
Okay, on here, there's like a little indentation, it goes in a few feet.
Okay.
So, we put one door like this, and the other door like that, so...
So, the doors would be at the center of the building, where the current door is, but they would...
Be one on the left and one on the right, but like, sort of inside the vestibule.
So, the exterior of the building would have one door entering in?
No.
Now, you would have no doors?
Are you talking about putting the doors like this?
Perpendicular.
Yeah, perpendicular.
You're saying the bricks, the store entry doors would be perpendicular to the street, facing each other in this setback vestibule?
I saw something like this, I mean, I would have to speak with the architect, but I remember going to Suzu, you know, with Stop &amp; Shop, and I don't know if it's still there, but...
Oh, I remember that, yes.
You go, you saw it have one door to the left and one to the right?
That makes sense, yeah.
I think, something like that, that way it wouldn't really alter the front.
So, the windows will stay the same size?
Well, newer, double pane.
Yeah, same size?
Yeah, oh yeah, it's gonna be all glass, I would like it to be open, plan to do like, you know, exposed brick walls, to redo the floors and ceiling, like an industrial type look, you know, to make it appealing to retailers who want to come into Newport who can't afford like a large space like this, it's almost 2,200 square feet.
How about the bathrooms?
Well, we have...
Well, there's one bathroom now.
That's right, so, a lot of money I'm gonna probably have to spend on putting in like another bathroom.
And the heating system and the air conditioning?
Yeah, the heating is there, we'll probably put in like an eight duct work, you know, on the ceiling.
You're gonna have one heating system for both places?
Well, we have, the building has one heating system.
Right, but are you gonna have one heating system for the two spaces, or are you gonna have two separate heating systems?
You know, I haven't, I'm gonna have to speak with the HVAC guy as to see which would be...
Well, if you have one heating system, you're gonna have to pay for the heating.
Well, the tenant had been, had been paying for the heat, we were splitting the heat, the tenants were splitting the heat one-third each. Of course, there's three floors, this building, I don't know if you know, you were in here last time, but there were four...
Oh, you have one heating system for the whole building?
That's right. So, what happens is the building curves around to Church Street, and the Inquiring Minds bookstore, if, you know, you know where that is, right? So, the building is sort of like an L shape, you can see there, right? So, on Church Street, the Inquiring Minds, so the boiler and the heating unit are...
So, Inquiring Minds is underneath this?
Yes, right. So, they provide, we have all the, the duct work is already in for the heating system, so we really haven't had any problem with that.
So, in other words, right now the tenants are dividing it up among themselves?
Yes, well, when I sign a lease with them, the owner of the earth goods is paying one-third of the heating charge. Inquiring Minds is paying one-third, upstairs there are office tenants.
How many are up there?
How about the air conditioners?
There are five.
Five?
Right.
How about the air conditioning?
They have individual air conditioning units.
So, they will continue to do that in, in the split space?
Well, I...
Because there's one, there's one in there now.
Yeah, there's one in the front door, and there's one, I think, out in the rear window on Church Street.
Okay.
So, I'm thinking of putting in like, you know, ducts with, with a, with a unit, you know, for the whole floor.
That would be large.
Right, and I want, I want to have to go over this with my contractor, and with the, the architect, you know, to make sure everything properly works.
And how about the sprinkler system?
We have a sprinkler system in the building, but this level, we didn't need to put one in, so we have the riser pipe, because I've owned this building about 27 or 28 years. So, before they were there, we had like a not fade-away tie-dye, any of you remember those old days? And took a while to get them out, but, you know, I fixed up the space, and at that time, we only, because we renovated the downstairs where the bookstore is and the upstairs, we had to put the sprinklers in those areas, not in the health food store. So, what we'll do now, since we have the riser there, we could just, I was told, extend the sprinkler pipes throughout the, you know, that whole retail space.
I mean, you'll have to do that.
Yeah, oh yeah, that's part, and a lot of money, but, it's what we have to do. I have to do whatever the, the building code is to do this.
My question is, how easily reversible would this be if down the road, the timing was up for the people who were there, and somebody actually did want the whole space? Would you be able to reconvert it to its existing space?
Well, I think, you know, on the plan, like, I think you have, like, there's will be a wall basically down the middle with two doors, so you would just remove the wall, although nowadays, at least in my mind, the only people who are renting large spaces like this are like big box type stores, like CVSs or GAPS, or who, the Village, you know, is really not looking for these type, you know, I get a lot of calls from, you know, smaller, you know, individuals who would like to open like a jewelry store, clothing store, a convenience store.
I just want to be optimistic and say sometime down the road, there's gonna be such a demand for space that, so I just, there's nothing that would preclude...
Right, we're not, right, this is not gonna be a cinder block wall or anything, you know, we'll put up, you know, sheet rock, whatever it is to code, to separate the two spaces. This is my wife June, by the way.
Hi, Steve.
Hi.
I have a question for our building inspector. This is a very densely populated building if this is approved. Are there fire code issues that...
Can you put a sprinkler system in? I think the rest of the building, I got a sprinkler system in.
I can't hear you.
The rest of the building already has a sprinkler system planned, which is the last area quite a bit.
So, there's no requirement for any additional...
There'll be egress, there's only limited size for egress, they're going out of the building.
How would...
Now, that almost gets addressed on like the planning board stage.
I can't hear you.
Well, the planning board does their segment, a lot of that, a lot of the building issues will be addressed during that work. Because we'll, we'll have to limit the sizes for egress doors, and we'll have to the planning board if they want to set those, or move around, stand up, one door versus two doors.
Okay.
But they would have to follow.
Yeah, in terms of a fire exit though, if there were a fire at the front of the building, how would people get out of these lower floors?
Of the, of the ground floor?
Of the ground floor, of the part that is now earth goods, would there be two?
Rear exit.
Are there two rear exits?
No, because, because the ground, you know, Church Street is maybe, I don't know, 20, 15 feet lower in elevation, so this, this would appear around the corner on the, as the second floor.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, I, I don't want to change the footprint, but I, you know, if I would have to add like a fire escape to the rear of the building, I...
There's a window over Church Street.
Well, there's four windows over Church Street.
That's the back of this, that's the back of this building.
Okay.
So, if they needed to get out of back, they could go out the window.
Okay, and they're...
It's about the bookstore.
Yeah, they're very, yeah, very large.
Yeah, it's hard to picture it back there what it is, I mean, because this, this earth goods now...
Yeah.
Is the front, and then it goes around the back over Church Street. So, if you look at Church Street, the bookstore, if you look up, you'll see a window, that's still part of earth goods.
Well, there are four windows, right above the Inquiring Minds.
So, they could get out through that window.
So, there'd be one on each side?
Oh!
When you divide it?
Oh, but how, yeah, how would...
Is there, is there one window now for the whole thing?
No, there are four windows.
Oh, four?
It goes...
In the back?
That's right, four in the back, but instead of being ground level, it's one level up.
One story up, oh, okay, so in other words, there'd be two windows for each one of these units?
Right, we call it that.
Well, their architect is, he's got, they'll have to design, make sure these all parts are trained, and present to us, your unit, so there's different options you have, it just depends on whether the architect's size is easier for that.
So, that's why your report to us didn't include anything about the fire issue potential, because if we grant this, if we grant this, then the planning board has to...
Yeah, but you also, you were a second too, you can't get...
Is this the synagogue?
Yes, the synagogue is over there.
Okay.
What's this building right here?
That's part of the synagogue.
Okay, yeah, okay.
This is the alleyway.
So, that's really narrow alley there?
Yes.
Okay, but that is...
And the windows are over here.
Yeah, Church Street.
This is Church Street. Here's the Inquiring Minds, all here, here's the Chocolate Place.
Okay, okay, now, now I'm, now I'm oriented, thank you.
So, I see, so if you're in the east side in store number two, you still would have an access to Church Street?
I guess they have to have access, right?
Right, they each would have two win, you know, two doors.
Yeah, no, that's okay, that's, that's my concern.
Okay, so you're asking for a 700 square foot variance, is that, is that true? Is it?
No, they're asking for 2,800 something square feet.
A 200% variance.
Yeah, they're asking for, yeah, they're asking for a very large variance.
They, more of a variance, yeah.
Okay, so Tony wanted to ask some questions.
We think that that variance would probably increase even more than what we're asking for, because you're going to cut in to where you want to come, sorry about the front of the building, very quickly, that's probably about five feet wide, that vestibule, it looks about maybe a foot and a half, indented into the building itself. So, what you want to do now is you're gonna turn that door sideways on each side.
Right.
So, you're gonna have to have a door that's about 30, how wide a door are you gonna put on?
Well, whatever is, you know, if it fits, like it's wheelchair accessible, you know, whatever, you know...
Thirty-nine and a half inches, at least.
So, you're gonna cut in at least four feet further into...
Can you open it out?
Can you open it out? Well, you can't have both doors on each side right now, so they're gonna have to open inward.
They have to open inward.
So, you're gonna need to cut in to this vestibule already, another three and a half feet, if you can picture what that would look like, to be able to fit the doors on each side.
What's your going to swing out?
I wouldn't like that idea of swinging out, because if they have to egress both of those buildings at the same time, and those doors open up, it could create a...
Or they swing at them, away from each other, that should work.
So, you put the hinges on different sides?
But the hinges on the opposite side.
Well, we can't design the building.
No, we can't.
This is not how...
No, but I think it's a...
One would not open up completely anyway, because the hinge that went on the opposite side would actually hit the wall to the back of the vestibule, so it wouldn't open up all the way.
Yeah.
Also, what would you think, what would be the wall that you would put up? You're gonna have to create an artificial wall.
Yeah, sheet rock, yeah, sheet rock wall.
And you cut that awning in half?
Well, we're probably, he's probably taking his awning.
Yeah, taking it, and you, but you'd split it up with two sides on each side.
Yeah.
So, if you go in about four feet, and it's gonna be about five feet, well, it's about another 25 feet on square footage, on top of what you will be using.
Do you have any more questions? Are there any, are there any conditions we want to put on this? So that, I mean, I, I'm just, it, the one thing that kind of sticks in my head is that this now creates two of the thinnest stores on the street, and I feel...
I measured for Mexicali, Lewis, narrow.
Is it?
Then ours will be.
Then yours will be?
Yes.
Okay.
Plus, our building is much deeper than most, most of the other stores.
I'm thinking of the width.
Yeah, I know, you're talking about the frontage.
Yeah.
It's, it's wider than the ice cream store as well, a walk hole, just to check and see what they were, so I was wondering if that would be a basis system, would that be an issue having a store that narrow?
Well, that's something we've got to think about.
Do we want one awning, even if it has two store names on it that are matching type, you know, print type stuff? Or do we, do we care if there were two separate awnings? Do we want one awning? You're saying conditions? Yeah, I'm saying conditions. So, are you saying... Put on the front so that it, it doesn't... I think that would be more attractive. Well, I, I'm just, I'm trying to think of what conditions we might want to...
Yeah, because, right, I've seen like your other shopping center, you know, will have one awning of the same design with just different names, that's what, I mean, right, yeah, we could do, you know, whatever the Village, you know, would like.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm thinking, because, I mean, you are obviously very lovely people and have good taste, but, you know, if Attila the Hun buys it, you know, we, the variance doesn't...
We're not selling it, so...
You're not selling it, but...
We're sorry, but...
Well, but I mean, eventually someone else will be the recipient of this variance.
So, you need to put the same writing.
So, we need to think about, you know, the best case and the worst case scenarios, so, I mean, yeah, so to, so to have one awning to somehow preserve the unity of the...
But we can't do that, that's the planning board's job.
Well, yeah, that, you know what we're concerned mostly about is you're asking for 2,800 square feet, which is more than 100%.
Yeah.
Well, this is a building, as you know, that's pre-existing from 1894. 2,500 square feet is, to me at least, quite large for a retail store for downtown Newport. I know the Water Street Market, the average size, although that might be a different zone, but they are like 200 square foot little, you know, cubicles. So, I don't think nowadays, it's very hard, you know, to make it in retail, and people are buying everything online, so you have to divide the spaces that we have into smaller units to make it feasible, you know, to pay all the expenses on the building.
Can we, and if so, do we want to stipulate that this has to remain retail space, so that...
Yeah.
One of them couldn't become, you know, if it was difficulty renting the space, one of them could not become an office, for instance?
I don't know if that would be a problem.
Well, that wouldn't be a problem, that's a commercial...
We're trying to maintain the retail fabric of Main Street.
Yeah.
It's awful big for an office space.
Yeah, I'm wondering if we can't give a variance that goes with the owners, but I don't think we can do that.
Can we stipulate that if there's a change of use, the variance has to be reapplied for? I doubt it.
What's your fear always is, if you have two, I don't want to see any buildings on Main Street not used.
Yeah.
And I think that's part of our fear here, is you've got two units you have to rent now, we don't like to see buildings that are not in use, even though they're, you know, it's not with zoning court, there is an aesthetic factor there, we all want, this is the heart of our town. So, that's a, you know, that's, that's really the, this is what we're trying to feel you out, what you want to do, and it doesn't matter what, I mean, yeah, we're all honest in what we say, what we rent to and what we can do.
If we could rent the whole space without doing this, that is a principle system, we would love to do that.
Right, that would be like less expensive.
This is more for us an option.
Right, I want to, you know, have this option, because, you know, although I've had people calling, you know, they're all smaller businesses, and, oh, this space is pretty big, when you rent half of it, and like a lot of them, you know, seem to say that, I said, "Well, I gotta get this approved."
One of the criteria that we have to consider, you know, there are five criteria we have to go through, and, and one of them is, is the variance substantial? And this would be the largest variance that I can remember, I mean, I haven't been on the board that one, but in four years, we have not granted a variance that was over 200%.
Can I ask what other buildings have been split? Well, we haven't split any buildings.
None of them have been split as far as, I mean, I've been on this, what, the longest?
Yes, yeah, I think you can. Because this has been earth goods for a while, I mean, we can't...
Right, I've, 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 I've...
None of, and, since I've been on the ZBA, there has never been a request for a variance to split a building with, you know, more than 100% variance asked for. The only thing that bothers me is, is this gonna set a precedent? And then, you know, the next person comes along and says, "Well, you know, they did it, you gave them a variance for," you know, Mr. Goldman to do it, "Well, I should be able to do it too."
Weren't you the person that told me that we don't have to worry about setting precedents?
Not me, I never said it.
Someone on this board, because I had exactly the same issue a couple of, a couple of applications ago, and the...
No, we had a problem...
And the answer was that everything is specific. Carl said this. He's what? Carl said that.
Well, it should be, it should be.
Yeah, but I think the bigger issue is that, you know, this is the kind of change in the character of the Village that is really the job of the trustees, not of us.
Why?
Well, because whether we want, I mean, I, this is my concern, is while we're not legally setting a precedent, aesthetically, we are setting a precedent. And it starts changing the way people think about that space on Main Street, and that just worries me.
Well, also, it has to do with the parking, if you, if you, I don't remember the requirement for a business to have...
Last week.
I know, I'm sorry, but...
Or last...
I don't remember what it is, but for a business to have, there has to be such an amount of parking, so now, what's this gonna do, make it double that?
That would be planning work.
Yeah, no, and, but, but the impact...
Their responsibility?
...to concern facade change. Is your concern to change in the facade by having two doors? That can easily be solved if you recommend to the planning board that you go in one door and then into another door.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, if we can put a condition on the...
That would be the condition.
On granting the variance, that there be a single entrance, a single entrance to On granting the variance, that there be a single entrance, a single entrance to the building remain and then it, it opens up.
From the outside.
That, that I would feel.
Will be along with that in that it requires a store commission.
Well, efficiency wise, it would make more sense to do that because if you open into a vestibule and you close a door, especially in the winter and in the summer where you got heating and cooling, you know, you're, you're not losing heat and cold.
Especially since you got three people splitting the bill.
Their issue.
Yeah.
Of solve the economic issue. It would also solve a future issue of KBS if someone wanted the whole space. Because then you've met all your requirements and you've also met your hardship requirement. Which if you can't rent an empty space that large on Main Street and you're sitting there with an empty building, that's not good either.
Yeah.
Economically.
So, so in terms of one of the other criterion that we consider is, is this a self-created hardship? And that's one I've been mulling over as well. And to the extent that there may be a change in the nature of retail space in the U.S., I'm willing to consider that as not being a self-created hardship.
I don't feel like this is.
Took me a while to get to that point, but I, I think that actually there are economic conditions operating here that make this a non-self-created hardship.
Well, shall we go down the criteria?
Yeah.
Okay, so the first one is whether a undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance. And the applicant's response is the change will be desirable for downtown New Paltz because he will approve the character of downtown Main Street. The next question is whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method which will be feasible for the applicant but would not require a variance. And the answer there is no. The third question is whether the requested area variance is substantial, and it certainly is more than substantial. The applicant says it's not substantial. Fourth, whether the proposed area variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental concerns of the neighborhood or district and no adverse effect.
Okay, can I, can I, the one other adverse effect that I worry about are the trucks unloading in the morning. I mean, that's, that's the other thing that we gotta think about because, you know, there are a lot of trucks unloading. I'm just throwing that in.
Can I respond to that?
Sure.
If it's not a food store that needs a daily delivery. Most stores have stock in their store.
Yeah.
Because they're not stocking a lot of goods. And most of the packages are delivered UPS, parcel post. It's not big trucks coming in with produce or meats.
Restaurants tend to have daily deliveries.
Yeah, they do, yeah. So, I mean, we can't, we are not granting a variance though for non-food retail space. We're granting it for retail space. So that, I'm just, you know, playing devil's advocate on that. Continue.
And the last one is whether alleged difficulty is self-created. And the answer there is no.
I'm inclined to say no. Okay, so.
This, what they wanna do is divide and conquer.
Okay, so would someone like to make a.
Close the public hearing.
I'm sorry. No, we have not closed the public hearing. Thank you. Okay, so.
I move to close public hearing.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, we don't have to make this determination at this time.
So now, now the next step is for us to discuss and vote or to vote or do we discuss?
Further discussion? Are we ready to vote?
I'm in.
Are you ready?
This is a thought.
Yes.
We're motivated by the same thing. You wanna be able to rent your building, you wanna make it aesthetically pleasing as possible. We wanna make sure it's aesthetically pleasing as possible. I feel that you can do that. I do think that Main Street is rather full of smaller businesses. It may even lead to some of that economic growth by getting rid of that large store there. I feel confident that it'd probably work out very nice to have two small buildings downtown. But I very much would like to just make sure that the plan that's put together looks good and is done well. That's a critical part of downtown. To the point, it must be, it is getting difficult to rent a building, that's honest, that space, I understand that. Twenty-two hundred square, it's a big. It's limited to what you can put in here too, because there'd be a lot of unused, especially if you have almost a right business, and it limits to what you can do there. So that's why I don't feel that this is a self-created hardship, except the fact that you have one to build. To make it into two buildings, it'd probably be a lot easier to rent. It may even bring in some type of business, or two types of small business that can really, again, add a nice punch to downtown economy. But I am concerned about cutting into the building as far as that you need to do it, and that would, one, make sure it looks good. You're gonna be cutting into some of that glass as well.
So we're gonna try to hire, like, I have an architect in mind and a contractor. You know, if you know Bob Cohen from Hudson Valley Contractors, and he's been a friend of mine for years, he did our house. And I have used Cliff Appeldorn as a.
I don't need the rest.
Well, yeah, we were sure they were good architects.
And like I said, we're motivated by the same thing.
They're local people and they know the area.
We would present the plans to the village, the planning board, the ZBA. You know, we, we want all of us to get something out of it.
From an aesthetic standpoint, it's almost, what's the fear? Is the fear harder than rent the right space for twenty-two hundred? Or is it harder to rent two spaces at a thousand square feet and what's the right space there to rent, you know what I'm saying, the right business that you'd wanna put down here? That's almost what the fear. One big one for twenty-two hundred square feet or two for one thousand, where do you feel more confident that it would look? Something that would be more, I guess, aesthetically pleasing and cooperative to what we do downtown.
But we're also trying to avoid it looking chopped up.
I agree with that. I mean, there are smaller buildings, and we could, we could vote to take it into the session. How do you guys usually feel more confident to?
Well, I think if one, one door was used so it looks the way it does now, which I assume it's looked that way for a long time, I don't know if it's looked that way since eighteen ninety-four or not, but.
I don't know either.
Has it?
I don't know.
You never saw any old pictures of Main Street?
It looks the same to me. I mean, we've seen all the pictures.
All right, well, I mean, it's not, it's not offensive. You've got your.
One, one store, when I, when I did like a history of the building, like sort of like a five and ten cents variety store, and all, all the levels were used.
But I mean, it was one door and, and two windows.
Yeah, one door for the whole building.
So the question is, do we want to consider voting in favor of the variance with conditions?
Yeah.
So that would be the first question.
Yeah, I would say.
Okay, so.
I would say a condition would be that, that it looked like it does there with one door.
Well, yeah, I think we can say that they have a single door.
Single door, yeah.
And that there's a, do you call it a vestibule?
A vestibule.
I think that is a place where you could close that, but that there'd be a single door and a vestibule where the two.
Spaces.
Spaces have their entrances.
So, point. Do we wanna specify that there be a vestibule or do we wanna leave that to the architect and rather specify that the entrances into the stores, into the individual spaces, are within those spaces as opposed to outside?
I, I don't hear about.
You guys want a single exterior.
Say that again?
Single exterior door.
Single exterior door.
That's all we need.
That's all we have to say.
We don't care about vestibules, stuff like that.
Right, okay.
Do you have an opinion about the awning? One or two? I can't hear you.
Well, you're, you're only one door.
So it should, yeah.
No, the awning has nothing to do with us.
So then I would be comfortable stipulating that there be one.
One awning, assuming they're, you're saying.
No, I think that whoever rents it is gonna wanna do their own thing.
They might not wanna have an awning.
Because I think earth goods taking the awning, although it's an old awning and.
I, I don't think, I don't think we really have anything to do with the awning.
Yeah, I think that's, that's, I think the single exterior door
Yeah.
is, is a reasonable thing to require, but how you, how you achieve that.
The architect figure it out. I mean, I have in my mind, but, you know, the architect would know how to make it work.
Yeah, I mean, there might be something more energy efficient we're not thinking about.
I was thinking of revolving door, but who knows, you know, like, kind of going to Macy's, but I don't wanna get the character.
That'd cost you a fortune.
Yeah, right.
Would someone like to make a motion?
I'm, what am I moving?
Well, would you like to move that we approve the.
Okay, so, yes, I, I move that we approve with the stipulation that there be one single exterior door. The change from one space.
One retail space to two retail spaces.
To two retail spaces, yes.
Second.
Okay.
Discussion, one of the store commission, your words here.
Historic commission isn't involved on Main Street. It isn't a, it isn't a designated historic property.
They certainly have been working to make that a district. Because they may have.
They didn't do it yet.
They didn't do it yet.
Yeah, the planning board should be the one that requires it.
Yeah.
I don't think that's our job. Okay, so we have a motion on the table. We have a second on it. And is there any further discussion? Okay, then, all in favor? Okay, all opposed? All right, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Right, talk to her.
Now you have your work cut out for you.
Thank you very much.
Now, now you go to the planning board.
Okay. Repeat that?
Now you'll go to the planning board then.
Okay. Should I start talking to my contractor, designer? Okay, great, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
What is it?
Oh, here, let me give you.
Me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is the.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. What do you do with that?
Yeah, I think there's. Because if you're using it for your decision, then it should be in the file.
Yes, then you're. Okay, thank you.
Broken, this workshop meeting, as you said, next year's ours.
Next year's ours.
I'm, I'm way over, I know. I'm carrying over.
Yes, you are.
Yeah, and before we proceed on any farther, I would like to welcome the high school students who are here for participation in government. Just bear with me a little bit, just a little explanation. I don't know if what you're, if you're aware of what you're witnessing up here. We are the zoning board of appeals. And what just happened here is some people wanted to do something to their property on Main Street, which is the health food store. And there's a village code that says buildings have to be a certain size, businesses need so much square footage. And when somebody wants to do something and they don't have quite as much as is required by the building code, they come to the ZBA and they ask us for a variance. And so that's what the discussion was that was going on. And unfortunately, we don't have a board up here where we can project things. But what we were passing back and forth was a photograph of the front of the store and then some floor plans. And we were trying to understand things like, could people get out safely if there was a fire in the front of the store? And now the next thing we're going to deal with is a request from the building inspector to make a determination of some terms. So, and then I'll continue on. Okay, so, the next item on the agenda is ZBA fifteen zero two, code determination of commercial uses. Mr. Jaffe's application states the following. This department is in need of a determination of a term used frequently in our codes. The code refers to a commercial use in determining additional requirements. We do understand that such uses as retail would be commercial use, but the code does not list it as such. What is even more unclear is the dwelling uses that have multiple structures and are run as rental businesses. The codes do not classify the difference of commercial and non-commercial for multifamily dwellings or multifamily parcels. Since the use is residential, one can argue that it is a residential use. One can also argue that the use is clearly for an income-based business that would require a commercial loan from a bank. With the codes being unclear as to how to determine the many residential uses that might be commercial, such as bed and breakfasts, nursing homes, multiple dwelling, multifamily dwelling, hostel, townhouses, et cetera, we request a determination from your board. The determination will resolve the use classification of residential use also listed as a commercial use. We will work closely with your board and gather whatever information you need in order to make this determination. So, I consulted with our attorney about whether we could interpret a term in a sense establishing a definition within the village code. Or if we had to be responding to a specific appeal where the building inspector needed us to clarify how a term was used. And I heard of the reply from the attorney read as follows. When the village board adopted the zoning law, it established separate use categories for residential uses and commercial uses. The use schedule identifies residential uses separately from other uses in the village. The code also includes a definition of residential use defined as, quote, "a use for living or sleeping accommodations for permanent occupancy, including all one-family, two-family, multifamily, rooming, sorority and fraternity houses, and customary accessory uses incidental thereto." That is Village of New Paltz zoning law, section two-one-two-five B. That is Village of New Paltz zoning law, section two-one-two-five B. Apartments and multifamily dwellings are almost always commercial enterprises. But the village board decided to treat them as residential uses for purposes of the zoning law. Compare this with a bed and breakfast, which is specifically included in the use table under the heading of business use. So if the ZBA feels that a new definition of commercial residential should be added to the zoning law, it can draft a definition and send it to the village board with a recommendation that it be considered for adoption. When answering the building department's request for interpretation, however, the board should limit itself to interpreting the law as the drafters intended it. If the meaning of the term or provision is unclear, we would be happy to assist the board by providing guidance on statutory interpretation. So.
May I ask a point about?
Yes.
I'm not clear about something.
Yes.
When it says that if it comes to us, we have to limit ourselves to interpreting the law as the drafters intended it. I'm assuming those people who wrote the code, the villagers.
The trustees, yes.
If the meaning of the term or provision is unclear, we would be happy to assist the board by providing guidance on statutory interpretation.
Yes.
So I'm understanding this to mean that if we were, if we were not clear or in agreement about the drafter's intention, which I think is a kind of a weird position to be put in, that we should have to figure out the drafter's intention.
Well, no, I think that's a separate sentence.
No, it is, but wait, so my question is, if we were interpreting, if something came to us and we were, you know, making a decision and we were interpreting the law as the drafter's intended it.
Yes.
Okay? If we had questions about the intentions, that's when we would get the statutory interpretation?
No, I think that what the statutory interpretation refers to is separately, if the meaning of the term or provision is unclear and New York State statute had an interpretation of the term, that in, because we are within the sort of, you know, tree of New York State, that absent a clear interpretation in our code, New York State statute could be looked to for definition. That's how I interpret that sense. Does that make sense?
I agree.
It, it does make sense, but I, you know, I mean, if we're looking at this and the language is the language, then I, I guess I wouldn't.
A problem is that Mark and Rich want an interpretation of commercial residential property and there's nothing like that in the code to be interpreted.
That part I understand.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with that.
So if we want there to be, then I think we need to work with our attorney to get something together and propose it to the village board.
Correct.
That's what I understand.
That's what it's saying here.
Yeah, and that's, that's unfortunate in a way, because this is their busy season. And I think they were hoping to have some clarity on this. Because certainly residential, commercial stuff is a major industry in this village. And it needs to be clarified and et cetera, et cetera. I don't think we can do it for it, Mark.
But the only thing I say, if there's a state rule.
Oh, yeah, yeah, come on up.
There's a state rule and you, you have that, that right. And you just read something saying the state says they're commercial, but the village says they're not.
Right.
Right, and so village law, so village law trumps, I mean, when, when village law says it clearly, then the elected officials have spoken in our village and we have to respect that.
But I'm just wondering, is that, would that make the code wrong because the village just made it more restrictive, rather than state rule?
It's usually okay to be more restrictive than the general law, state law.
Because in code, it went to Department of State.
But we are being, but village code is looser than.
Right, and that's why we should urge the village board to change the code by adding a definition.
So would the interpretation today be, it's residential?
Well, first of all, we would need to have a specific appeal.
Well, that's not true, she's wrong there, because in the code, it gives, anything that we question, whether people or not, we come to your board for interpretation.
Okay, tell us, tell us the section and specific items where you are looking for that interpretation. Amazingly, commercial isn't, isn't in any of the glossaries there, it's not even a, even an indexed item.
I know, didn't you have commercial groups? It's crazy.
Yep. It's a Swiss cheese cone.
If you have a definition, our residential, including anything that wasn't residential, then we consider commercial.
No, the problem is.
I think about the only thing that we can.
Well, that's. Okay, what is, where are you?
Two twelve dash forty-eight, powers and duties of.
I'm sorry, two twelve.
Dash fifty-eight.
Dash fifty-eight.
That five B or fifty-eight?
Fifty-eight.
That's an.
Powers and duties of board of citizens. And B is interpretation. The board of appeals shall, upon appeal from a decision order or requirement, or by an administrative officer of body, to be asked, or upon a request of any officer or board of the village, decide any question involving interpretation of any provisions of this chapter, including determination, exact location, and zone district boundaries, if there is any necessary.
Okay, Mark.
Uns certainty with respect.
What we want is a specific section where the word "commercial" is used, that you would like us to interpret "commercial" in that sentence.
Having the.
Let's clarify here, I think, maybe on your behalf, Mark. There are developments that are being considered residential that are rental properties that really require for, for better, better government, really require that certain things happen if it's going to be a rental property, such as water driveways, curved sidewalks, vegetated buffer zones between the landscaping, et cetera, et cetera. At this time, and we know this from a couple of recent incidents here in the village, that this is not required now. People can put in huge rental operations and cite them and build them out as if it were simply a residential. And so this was going to hopefully move us toward better regulation of this, so we don't get into so many problems.
Well, and it's not just that, it's also that the, the issues created by these amorphous, now amorphously categorized, let's say, properties.
Inappropriate.
Revolve around health and safety issues. Many of the requirements that are impose, or are imposable, let's say, if it's commercial rather than residential, include things that we, that are for the safety and well-being of the neighbors and also for the residents of those buildings.
And that's what we.
And that's why the New York State code, as I understood it, I'm sorry, I can't give you the citation. The New York State code says, single and two-family houses, living, however they word it, cannot be designated commercial. But multifamily, three-family and above, multifamily, various words that they used, are, are commercial and would then.
And that's what Mark was asking.
And that's the state building, the state building codes are broken into different categories. One is residential and one is commercial. And only one and two family fall under residential.
Right, okay, so do you have a section there?
Yeah, I got the sidewalks and curbing.
Okay, well, tell us the number, please.
That is two twelve dash forty-three. Design standards for off-street parking areas. And C, who says "commercial uses."
So is, is design standards A or B or C?
Yes, it is, yes, two twelve dash forty-three, C.
C, it's design standard.
Sidewalks and any parking area for commercial use containing more than twenty spaces should provide separate pedestrian ways, curbing, and lanes for custom deliveries. And it talks of sidewalks, the width of them. So if they're declared residential and they're underneath that twenty space, they don't need to have sidewalks. And then you have, then you have residential driveways, so if it's a residential driveway, it's, it's not to exceed eighteen feet. So there's actually a maximum. So if you put a apartment complex in, by the code, you can't go over eighteen feet wide. But technically, it'd be commercial, we're eighteen feet minimum. And then there's also the term "non-residential," that's really what's used a lot in the code, "non-residential."
Give us an example.
There's joint facilities, any, any two or more non-residential establishments shall be a particular collective joint and provide a required off-street parking. Let's say with a capital, there's two, there's three buildings there. If they were to declare it commercial, non-residential, he, he would have had to do a whole different parking layout. And that would have solved a lot of issues over there. Parking, drainage, I mean, you can go through this code, you'll see a lot of non-residential, there's a lot of them in business districts, non-residential uses.
Even, even in district regulations, minimum lot size, all commercial uses, like we just saw at Earthus, all commercial uses. Two thousand five hundred square feet residential.
Right, but you're, that's what we need, we need, we need to know exactly.
But I guess, I don't know.
What it is we want this to.
But I don't even know, if you're gonna shoot this over to the trustees.
Yes.
We would just have, have Will Franks just draw something new code. If you guys don't, if you, if you feel you can't make the interpretation, and I, I mean, your input is great, but it'd be almost a waste of time. Because we would just have to turn, draw something up and deal with the village trustees.
Right. Directly.
Because we.
Through, through will.
I wouldn't oblige.
I mean, we'd like your recommendation.
Absolutely. Right, and I think we run. We just don't have the power.
Yeah, we don't have the power and I think we run the risk of just muddying something.
Yeah, I, I think this has to go to the, to the board of trustees and they have to.
Change the code.
Right, change the code, write the law.
Okay, so.
But now, here's the one, if an applicant comes in tomorrow.
Yes.
With this scenario, and I say it's commercial use, and he brings it to this zone of the. You're gonna have that face in front of you.
We will deal with that if it happens.
That's what I'm just saying.
We will deal with that if it happens.
It's not proposed, so there's nothing. It's just that, you know, that's, we're, we're trying to stop.
So you're saying that if, you're saying that if, if the board decides it's going to take action but hasn't taken action by the time somebody comes to you, then you, because you're using these standards, would rule in one direction and if they disputed that, they would come to us?
Which I don't see that happening.
I understand.
Just give me that, or, what we were trying to do is cut that off, is what I'm here.
Right, and.
We'll go to the trustees.
We understand that, and is it the wish of the board to send a recommendation to the board of trustees? Or do we simply want the building department to do that?
And we would like, like, even if it's a small recommendation, we don't have to get into detail to say what you recommend.
I would be willing to send it.
Yeah, I, I think, I think, yeah, I think we should send the recommendation.
Be willing to ask that it be done ASAP.
Yeah, you don't need to put like, any samples in there, just a recommendation. At least give the trustees, which I, I don't think is a problem, I think the trustees are gonna see this in the same way.
Based on how many units or how many people, limits like that.
Just out of curiosity, from my own thought process, I'm not suggesting that we do this, but from my own thought process. If we were going to take it upon ourselves to bill, to either recommend a definition or write a definition or whatever. I, I understand.
Okay.
We could use the New York State language if we chose to.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so could I have a motion to the effect that.
So move.
Well, wait, well, we'll get it out.
All right.
That the, I guess I should write a letter on the hand of the board, ZBA, to the board of trustees recommending that they review the language concerning commercial property in the village.
Residential.
To, to address.
The distinction between residential and commercial.
Make a distinction after it's down.
If you want, you can just positively, you can move to positively recommend the letter that Mark wrote to the village board.
Okay, I, I think, I want to get this down a little tighter. So we make a distinction between, um, commercial, residential, and, um, what would the other kind be?
No, it would be commercial and.
Or.
Residential. The distinction is between residential and residential. When, yeah, when does.
Or residential, okay.
But I think there needs to be a deeper analysis of this, and that is in your letter asking the board to determine when residential is commercial.
Thank you.
Because that's the bug of it right here in our code, is to distinguish between commercial and residential. I don't seem to understand that residential is often commercial. So that's the clarification you really need in my opinion.
Okay, thank you. So I will get something drafted and run it by you guys.
Do, do we have to wait for our next meeting to take action?
Oh, oh, actually, we have a motion at the table, don't we?
I don't, but I, I mean, if you.
No, we need a motion for you to send the recommendation.
So we don't have to wait?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
So I make a motion that you draft a letter to the village board to address the problems of, well, commercial and residential.
Okay.
Is that how I want to say it?
Yeah, to determine when residential property in fact needs to conform to commercial standards.
Right, okay.
That's. Needs to conform, needs to be designated commercial and therefore conform to those standards.
Okay. And, um, so is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes, thank you, Mark. Okay, so, third item on the agenda. Could I, is rehearing request for ZBA fourteen dash sixteen. Would you all like to join us at the table? May I have a motion? Well, right, before we do that, let me read this. Yes. Okay, so is anybody interested in volunteering or anything on the village? We need young people getting involved in the government.
Did somebody sign their sheets?
I'm doing it right now.
Well, give it to anybody else. Anybody can sign it.
And what's the name of your class? Participation. Participation.
Hey.
That's an actual class?
Yeah. And the acronym is that to next.
Is that everybody?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Oh, okay, so I don't have printed something?
Right, no, I, I don't think so. So I'm going to read the relevant portion of New York State code regarding the rehearing. This is from New York State Code, Village Law, seven dash seven twelve dash A. Rehearing. A motion for the zoning board of appeals to hold a rehearing to review any order, decision, or determination of the board not previously reheard may be made by any member of the board. A unanimous vote of all members of the board then present is required for. is required for such rehearing to occur. Such rehearing is subject to the same notice provisions as an original hearing. Upon such rehearing, the board may reverse, modify, or annul its original order, decision, or determination upon the unanimous vote of all members then present, provided the board finds that the rights vested in persons acting in good faith in reliance upon the reheard order, decision, or determination will not be prejudiced thereby. So, in that case, we, um, if this is to be reheard, it has to be a unanimous vote. Would anyone like to make a motion to entertain the rehearing request for ZBA fourteen sixteen? Okay, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Okay. Is there any, um, discussion?
Well, I wasn't here when the whole thing came down, so.
Okay.
From what I've read
Yes.
on, on this so far, I mean, this is my, I, I'm the rookie.
Okay.
But this is, Judge Malcony had made it, sent it in order to show cause, which, um, allowed Mr. Caffrey to do, uh, some things as far as building permits. And the village had thirty days to show why that shouldn't happen. Uh, they ended up making a settlement. What Judge Malcony said was that he would have a right to build there. What he also said was within that right, he had to follow all current laws and zoning. So if the, if the appeal is on the right to build, I wouldn't hear it. But if the, the appeal is on, is what has been built following the current zoning codes in the village, and if they have not been followed, the jurisdiction in the settlement would fall under the building inspector. And if there was violation, we should hear that appeal. That's my take on this. I mean, that's just, I may be off, but from what I've read, and from what the order to show cause states, and what the settlement states, that's what stated in it. The right to build was granted as long as it followed the current zoning codes and the law. So if the appeal is based on that was not followed, I would recommend hearing that. That's what I took from what I read extensively.
On point of court, Tony. You are correct in your overall summary, in my opinion. But the remedy is that you file complaints with the building inspector on any level.
There's, we're not having public discussion, I guess. So, um,
I'm not interested in changing the, the determination because it was based on what our attorney, um, advised.
Okay. So, are we prepared to, um, so we have a second on this, um? I'm, I'm actually, um, wishing that the people who are appealing this would, would look for what is actionable now if they, uh, wanna pursue something. Look for what's actionable now if you don't get remedy from the building department under the village board.
I can only say that the, uh, the concern we had was that the determination, um, that was adopted had a number of mistakes of fact. And, uh, that raises serious questions to the validity of that determination and terms of, um, dealing with the problem here, the violations which would have precluded, see, we're, have appealed the issuance of the COs. And the presence of the violations on the site is a condition that would preclude the COs. I mean, that's black and white. To say that you could not, um, consider that, I really don't understand.
I don't understand why it took so long for these issues to be raised after the place is built.
Well,
Yeah, we have a second.
Um, when you see an excavator digging a hole in the ground, you don't know that they're gonna have twice as many bedrooms as they should. So you can see that constructions taking place, but you don't really, the problems with it do not become evident until the residents have moved in. You realize that the number of cars is twice as many as there should be.
If some of that is actionable, then, if it is perhaps still actionable, I think that's where you would best be spending time to remedy the situation.
What's interesting to this point is although Judge Malcony ruled that, uh, no site plan was needed in order to show cause, in the settlement, a floor plan was to be shown and it had an opportunity to be looked at, and that's in the settlement. So that was an opportunity. So if that floor, that plan was not followed, then that's, that's a question. However, that was, should have been public knowledge to what was being built there. It shouldn't have been a surprise if he's got four bedrooms and now he's got eight, because that floor plan was required in the settlement.
What happened was
No, we're not.
That the bedrooms were built with dividers, not walls. And then, when he got the CO, the landlord used removable partitions to subdivide the bedrooms into twice as many bedrooms. And that gets back to, well, the issue of the gent-
The jurisdiction of the building inspector.
Yeah.
Right, and the process is that we can appeal COs within a thirty day window, which is exactly what we did. So if you're referencing, uh, the determination that attorney to the ZBA advised you on, we've identified it's been incorrect. And we would like you to respond to our request to rehear, not to just keep telling us that we didn't file in time, because we did.
No, we are not telling you that you didn't file in time. We sent a fairly substantial booklet that you prepared over to the building inspectors. We have to have something from them saying that these conditions exist.
On point of order-
No, no, no.
On point of order-
No, Sally, no, thank you.
The determination that there are no violations on site is by necessity made by the building inspector prior to the issuance of a CO. The law requires that he make that determination.
Yeah.
So when he issues a CO, he is stating that there are no violations. But we have shown through the booklet that there are violations. So the COs were issued in error, and that is why we appealed them. We're not appealing the violations that are on the site. We're appealing the issues of the CO. And they were issued inappropriately because the violations are there, as you can all see. Anybody driving by sees them. They're physical, they've always been there, are still there.
I'd like to hear Sally's point of order.
Okay. Yes.
On point of order is to have no motion on your table, therefore you should not be in discussion. Do we need to move to grant the rehearing or move to deny it?
We, we do have a motion on the table.
We do have a motion on the table.
Hmm?
We do have a motion on the table.
But the motion is whether we should reheare-
Yeah, we're not rehearing it. They're arguing about why we should.
They have requested a rehearing.
Yes.
Given the courtesy of either granting the rehearing request. It is not a debatable matter, or you will deny it. So you should not be entertaining discussion.
Well, I, I, there was an order, we could discuss this.
Yeah.
It was a debatable matter. I think maybe within our own board, if we wanted to talk about it. I think that's fair. I don't know if it requires a discussion or not, but this was something that we can discuss.
Okay, so now we're, right, and now we can move to vote?
I've said my piece.
Does anybody else have anything you wanna say? Okay, all in favor?
Of?
Of the motion.
Which ear? Motion to rehear.
Yes, so that is what you move, right?
Yes.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye. Next.
I'm abstaining.
And you?
That's why they pay us the big bucks.
Yeah, you gotta make, you gotta make a decision.
Okay.
You can abstain.
No, I am, I cannot abstain.
Okay. Okay, now that that has been decided, I would like the board to, um, uh, give me permission to send a letter to the board of trustees concerning the Ulster County request for combination of tax map parcels. Although ZBA fourteen sixteen did not read the lot line revisions, nor any activity on the new lot sixteen point one, we need to understand the locations of the newly merged lots one point one and sixteen point one, which were treated very differently in the Article seventy-eight decision. We learned that Ulster County, with approval of the municipal assessor for at least one of the lot line revisions, had merged four lots into two lots and assigned new numbers. No grievance of this has been brought to the ZBA, so it is not ours to judge. Nonetheless, we noticed what seemed to be several anomalies in procedure and feel that we should bring this to the attention of the village trustees to deal with as they see fit. Neither the Ulster County nor the municipal assessor ever informed the village of the lot line revisions. So this is an intergovernmental communication issue. Only because the ZBA requested the documentation did the village learn of the action. Secondly, the village, Ulster County, and the municipal assessor may have different understandings of the phrase tax administration purposes. Three, it is unclear why an application was accepted and granted in June when the application states clearly that requests must be dated between January first and March firsts. Requests after March first will not be accepted until the following tax year. In the process of authorizing the requested merger, the municipal assessor may apply further conditions. It is possible that the village board of trustees might have assumed that portions of the village of Newfald's code would be applied by the municipal assessor before granting the lot line revisions. Again, this may be an intergovernmental communication issue. Although a single lot line merging two lots was requested, two lot line revisions were granted merging four lots into two lots. It is unclear why the application cautions that subsequently splitting the merged lots might require planning board approval, but says nothing about merging possibly requiring local approval. Those are issues I think need to be communicated
What does that have to do with us?
What it has to do with us is that in the process of reading through a lot of documentation, we noticed anomalies in the way this was handled. No one in the village would ever have found out that this happened. We do have some provisions in the village code that might be relevant to lot line revisions. It would seem that our code ought to enter into this process.
I still don't understand why zoning board of appeals, is this an appeal?
No, this is simply a letter from the zoning board of appeals to the village trustees, alerting them to the fact that we encountered what we think are some serious anomalies
Okay.
in the way Ulster County Real Property Tax Agency is granting lot line revisions with the approval of the municipal assessor.
Well, now, I believe, and Sally can probably speak to this, but there is just a recent change in chapter two twelve where now the definition of subdivision includes lot line deletion, lot line alteration, and lot line revision. That was fairly new.
But the whole lot line revision requires the chairman of the planning board's signature by our code.
Now, this, yes.
And that one is never done.
It, it did at the time.
It did at the time, apparently. This, this relates to the Caffrey project.
It did at the time, and I think there is a, you know, I mean, simple person that I am, when I read that the, um, merge into one parcel is for tax administration purposes, I think that has something to do with the way the tax bill is issued and not for the way the property is developed. I could be wrong about that. But I think it's perhaps of interest to the board of trustees that it seems that perhaps there's a misunderstanding between Ulster County in their use of tax purposes, tax administration purposes, and how this proceeds forward. And since there is a space on this form where the assessor can put in additional requirements, it just seems to me that this is worth calling to their attention, because I think they possibly thought that certain provisions in our code sort of qualified as additional conditions that the assessor would require.
So, so what do you wanna do? You wanna write a letter to the trustees?
I do.
That, she's-
Do you need a motion for that?
I do.
I make the motion. Some moved.
Okay. All in favor?
Do you make a motion to support the sending of the letter?
Yes.
It's seconded?
I'm seconding it.
Yes.
Do we need to specify what the letter is, or?
Yeah.
Okay, 'cause that's not a motion.
Let's, let's ask the secretary what she's got on what the motion is.
I, I literally just have exactly what you said, Mr. Coffimo's move to support the sending of the letter.
Of a letter, um, to the village board of trustees concerning the Ulster County request for condemnation of tax map parcel procedures.
Would you also have the assessor of the town involved, and that becomes the problem too?
Well, but I mean, in the motion, we can have that. I've largely written out what I'm going to say, because of course-
Yeah, but that's, you don't need to-
Because of this.
Yeah, we're kiss, you know, that.
Yeah, I think we can.
So we should put-
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I, I still don't understand if, I mean, the one that-
We got a motion on the floor.
Well, we're trying to get clear about the language of it, yeah.
One of the things that mystifies me is I don't know how a request to have two lots merged into one became a request or resulted in four lots being merged into two
in the not right time.
And then pulled apart again.
Well, I don't think they've been pulled apart again, but the fact of the matter is that there were four lots. They were merged into two, and the request was only to merge two lots.
But also that the timing of their, of their offices was not met.
Yeah, and that they don't go along with their own timings, so.
Shouldn't have been, shouldn't have been done period, because of the, once again, timeliness. The whole Caffrey thing is shot through with timeliness issues. The whole Cafrey thing is shot through with timeliness issues.
My only concern is that we make sure that we worded the, uh...
Motion.
Motion. To include everything we needed to include, and I, I would take advice on that, I don't know. So if we need to clarify the motion that we're, that authorizes you to send...
Well, I said the tax map parcel procedure, which includes...
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's...
Additional conditions required by the assessor.
And do you want to reference that it came to our attention as a result of the Cafrey...
No, I don't think that's necessary in the motion.
Okay.
All right. Any further discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
And I will close.
Thank you. Any, any dissent?
Very nice. Everyone voted aye?
I'm a quiet.
Okay, fine, just, if you want to vote aye, I just want to get on record. Okay, so then I got a...
So we'll, we'll get a copy. I don't have a copy of this, I believe.
Oh, you do have a copy of this.
Okay.
Of the, not my marked up copy, but you got a copy of this.
Okay, so I have this but not that. That'll be the letter that you'll send.
That will be the letter.
Okay.
Should I include that in the minutes, your letter?
I, I haven't actually written that, I mean, if you...
No, those are her notes.
I will probably make a slightly cleaner copy out of this.
Well, you're going to send it to everybody anyway, aren't you?
I think I will. It, it can be part of the public record, I can send it to email with the assumption anyone can read it. Um, and you guys can make recommendations if you would like. Okay, so now we get to some of the easier stuff. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from April 14th of 2015?
No, there's a problem.
Okay.
And it has to do with two adjournments.
Oh.
In which I was not involved at all because I left early. When the commercial discussion got out of hand, I went home and let my dog out.
I think I gave you the updated copy.
No. There was no updated copy. We still had two adjournments, didn't we?
I, I updated it when you told me.
You took my stuff.
I didn't need to.
No, here's my file.
Where are two adjournments?
Well, one is, I mean, one was obviously us coming out of executive session, but it shouldn't have...
I thought I changed it.
Okay, ZBA, no, this is...
Well, there's executive session down here, and then come back and do...
Yeah.
I was, I was gone before the place was adjourned.
Right.
Yeah.
So it says that you're opposite.
Okay, good. Okay, oh, all right, okay. And, okay, those two, that's fine. Okay, the way you, they were presented, I didn't read the small print. Good print, thank you, dear. That's it.
Okay, so is that a motion to approve?
Sure.
Okay. And who is able to actually vote on this? I think just...
Not me.
The three of us.
Yes.
Okay, so we better all approve, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it is approved. Okay, and now the favorite motion of the meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.